Hi, good afternoon, everybody. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. We'll be hearing multiple hearings today. We're going to start with a couple of corrective bills at the request of Legislative Reference. We are going to start with 21-0101, Corrective Bill 2021 General. I will turn the floor over to Director Eisenstark for an overview of these bills.
Good afternoon. I think I got all the buttons pushed. I'm not used to WebEx. Because we don't usually get involved in testifying. But this is a series that we've done virtually every year or every other year on occasion. And that is to search out or what we discover if there are things that don't make sense, are bad grammar, or just say the wrong thing, and I'll give you some examples. Now, it's easy to say that it's all non-substantive. But if you want to be exact, change of a comma could be substantive. Even a grammatical change might be considered. The best way to put it is as I put it in an email to you and in a memo that has been put online and sent. That in all cases, we take very much care to assure ourselves and you that the changes do not affect or implicate policy decisions. In other words, we don't make policy. We don't suggest it unless asked. So there are changes. Maybe the easiest way is just to give you a couple of examples. There are two bills, two amendments that were filed that have been filed with you that would... Whoops. I'm sorry, I have the wrong file. That we don't even use the comma. I mean, the comment, because it's pretty obvious. The amendment that was prepared, or both of them prepared by us, but this is posed by Legislative Reference. And you'll see on the first page, the word "principal," spelled P-L-E, at the end, is corrected because the wrong homophone was used. It's "principal," P-A-L, residence. That's the word that should be used. It's a simple error. And the other amendment is to clarify language as to when it says that a security deposit grant is not considered income to the tenant. That what does that mean? This was written outside and it was copied from the Law Department. And it could mean two things. One is that it's not considered income for purposes of taxing, or it's simply not considered income in determining a tenant's income and eligibility. The fact that they get this grant and it goes to the landlord does not change the aggregation of what is considered the maximum tenant's income eligibility to get this grant. And it just changes word. There, there's a comment that is added to explain. There was only two amendments there to the bill. And then the other one is from Councilman Dorsey. And that, I'll say one line and then refer to Councilman Dorsey. For a few years now, the law that refers to street vendors refers to the jurisdiction over that by the Department of General Services. In fact, and in action, except where people got confused, that hasn't been the case. It is the Department of Transportation. This would amend the bill to amend the code to change it to the Department of Transportation. And that was done, these two amendments, as noted and as Councilman Dorsey indicated in his letter, these were things that came to light after the bill was introduced. So we have to do it by amendment, and it's about time for DOT and DJAS to be clear as to who has jurisdiction, and it is DOT. Councilman Dorsey? It's not up to me, but since I brought it up, is there anything to add? It is not substantive in that, in fact, for years, it has been DOT that is considered in the budget and other places. Sorry for the hand. I'm using my iPad because I don't have a screen calendar on my computer. Or we can go on. I can run through. I don't know how you want to handle it because we obviously can't go through both bills page by page. And because a lot of it's repetition. But in the bill itself, being 21-101, or 0101101, it's grammar in many places, sometimes going to classic, go to the verb, not the noun form. And it is in conformity with, the simple word confirms, does it, and makes it a lot clearer. I'm just giving an example. There are some others where it's obsolete provisions, where it refers to the penalty for violations and... Excuse me. And violations dealing with citations, the amount, and it refers to laws that have been repealed. So it just deletes the reference to that law. Grammar, all data is followed by the verb "is," and that should be all data "are." Very minor sense of impact, but sense of readability and of course, correct grammar usage. It's a good idea to talk in English and not redundancy, such as the reason for why. The word "why" covers the reasons. It's redundant. And there are other more, a little heavier, but it's very much the same thing. Missing conjunctions, ending a sentence with a preposition is not a sin. I could talk about that longer than you'd want to hear. It's fine. And to use the word "otherwise disposed" without the "of" is kind of click, cranky. Cross-references, missing verbs, things like that. And that's really, I think, what it is. With one, one is sort of closest to being substantive is on page 10, is where it's talking about ethics, the disclosure requirements for candidates to a position. And it takes a line from the state law, which requires, this is based on the state law, which requires that the information to be given by the candidate is the same as would be by the incumbent as well. It's the same type of disclosure. And that's been added to conform to the state law. And then this sections that really refer to the entire subtitle rather than a section, references to, as used in this law. Well, this law, the word "law" covers a lot of things. The entire code is law. But where in the law? And it really needs to be changed to subtitle. We've got to tell people, if we're saying "except as otherwise provided," or the purpose of this law, what law are we talking about? We corrected that. And I think I've covered the gist of it, but answering questions on that. And go to it. Sometimes it's just a plural. A list of things in the plural and then an additional added somehow without the plural. It just makes it consistent and readable.
All right. Thank you very much, Avery. We're happy to have you on WebEx. Thank you for explaining that to us. If anybody has any questions, we can entertain them before we move on to an amendment and then the next bill. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Two things. One is I don't see, I see Dorsey's amendment, but I haven't seen the other one. And I didn't see it in any of Richard D. emails. Were those sent out or?
The emails.
They were sent out Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay. I'll look in that email. Thank you very much. And then the second question, rookie here, so I have a sort of broader question around the corrective bill in general, if you don't mind. One, so this looks like we're correcting grammar and some technical things. I noticed and you just explained that there was one piece that you wanted to fix because, on the ethics piece, because it made it consistent with state law. My question is, what are we at some point, and maybe it's the next bill or maybe it's at some point, making corrections on bills that the state then supersedes? Example, the Home Act. The Home Act right now in Baltimore, the city law says that there's, you can't discriminate up to 20% of your units, which I never, you know, we could talk about the merits of that. The state law supersedes and doesn't say that, right? So right now, our code isn't the same. So again, I'm just curious how we manage that kind of thing in a corrective bill or we leave it alone. How does that work?
Are you asking me or? I'll say this. The first thing is, does anyone care? In other words, does anyone have a policy thought that it should be something different? In this case, my recollection is that actually, there are provisions in the state law that required local laws to be substantially similar to the state law. So this is not a gimme. It's a clarification that is really required even without the statement, but it's not in our law. And people will look at our law. Our law was drafted, I did it, not the original version, but the modern day revision. It's modeled after the model, the current version, this is 20 years ago, state law. And this provision, I don't know when it came in. It came in later and it was called to our attention that we don't explain what does a candidate, what questions are they responsible to make? And it's required by the state. We're required to conform to the state requirements. And therefore, I would posit that this is non-substantive.
Whereas my example before is substantive enough that we need to actually have a discussion about it, even though the state law supersedes the city law.
No, it supersede, tells us how the local laws, what is required of local laws.
Well, the Home Act, that's not the case, but we can go into detail about that later. I was just curious about that difference. But I understand what we're trying to do with this corrective bill. I just always had that question about that, about the Home Act and why it's, we hadn't corrected that locally yet.
Yeah, I don't know that, what you're referring to, and that's a little different, I think. This is something that is required. It could be added as a reg, but it makes it a lot better. And the IG's office, we checked with them as well to make sure because they're now monitoring, assisting, and the Ethics Board, which we previously did. So that's, it really is trying to make sure that we're not... I think in the 23 years that I've been doing this, I've had only one case where someone saw something and said, "I think that's substantive." Didn't argue with them. I don't even remember what it was about. We carved it out of the bill, but that's only the one time in 20 years. We very much try to make sure this is not something that is a policy issue. It just makes sense. And yes, in this case, I think, I don't have the language in front, but I'm almost positive it falls within the sentence that requires local boards must follow certain provisions in the state law, and this is within that.
You good, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I just have to figure out this Home Act thing. The source of income piece is a different issue completely. But the Source of Income Bill is, our city bill is different than the state bill. The state bill supersedes. So do we even bother with changing the language in our bill? Or do we just go with the fact that the state supersedes? The state bill does not say we have to conform to what the state bill says, right? It just supersedes. So I mean, that might just be a larger question I need to address with the...
Yeah. What you mean by "supersedes," I would ask, it depends on that. If it applies, then I think it should be changed because otherwise you got inconsistent. And then people will ask and have to search and find out, well, which one controls?
Right.
And it ought to be consistent.
And do we do that in a corrective bill or do we do it in a separate bill?
If in fact, it is preempted by the state law and this statement is wrong, I say that it would be putting it into a corrective bill. But we could talk. I don't know what it is you're referring to.
Sure. So if you don't, so Councilman Dorsey worked on this on the local level. So, and I did the work on the state level. The local bill, it was amended at the last minute saying there can be, you know, source of income, there can be in 20% of the landlord's units, they cannot discriminate. Like they, right now, people, then, back then, people could say, "We're not going to take vouchers." So, you know, what we did was we tried to end that with a local bill. The bill at the last minute was changed, saying 20%, you don't discriminate, but the rest of your units, you can discriminate. The state bill finally passed and it says zero, and you must not discriminate based on source of income. The state bill is better. The state bill supersedes. The local bill still has the 20% in. So do we make a correction bill? Do we just deal with it? That's my question. And I'm sorry I didn't bring it to you before these bills came up for the hearing.
Well, you could do that with a separate bill. I'd be glad to talk to you. In fact, I'm very pleased to have just talked to you today because we talked on the phone, I think maybe once, when you talked to our office. Nice meeting you. But I think, as a, I'm a guy who says, I got to look at all the words and make sure, is the penalty the same? And if it's different, does that make a difference? I don't know. I'm not trying to argue.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll follow up and thank you, Mr. Chair, for indulging me. Appreciate it.
No problem. Any other questions before we move on?
My name is Vernadine Kimball, and I'm here to interview with you.
Ma'am, we're not up to that. We're not up to that yet. We have a couple hearings before.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do apologize.
No problem. We'll call on you when we're up to the executive appointments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So Avery, would you like to also speak on 21-0124 before we go over to the agencies and then come back for the amendments?
Let me do that.
A quick rundown on 0124.
Yeah, it's unfortunately 108 pages. I'm not even going to leaf through them with you.
Just give us the 108-second version.
I will try to do that. But let me just background. As many of you will know, we adopted, you adopted, a separate article dealing with common definitions for the entire code. That, yes, I think the author of that or the initiator of that just waved me down. The idea then is to go through the code and make it consistent. Basically, the simplest thing, and it's repeated throughout, where a word is being defined somewhere else in the code. For example, just includes. The word "includes" is defined in the standard as means by way of illustration and not by way of limitation. Don't have to repeat it because we have the standard definition and we go through the code and we repeal all of those references. They're just repetitions of what's in the new, excuse me, new article. There are certain, going to the other extreme, the one that is the most variant is the definition of person. This, we discovered as we went through it. The standard version in the General Provisions article, which lists the various new definitions, defines person to mean any individual receiver, trustee, et cetera, partnership firm, association corporation, et cetera, and adds, "Person does not include, except as otherwise expressly provided, a governmental entity or an instrumentality or unit of the governmental entity." Okay, here, we couldn't, we could, where the existing definition elsewhere says much the same thing, we can delete it because it's just, it's said once, you don't have to say it a thousand times. But many of the definitions throughout the code have variances as to whether or not it applies to the city itself or even to other governmental entities. So that requires a variation. And so that became, not tricky, but I had it stay awake to figure out what is the language and had to double check. It's not just me. And there are all kinds of modifications on the person, but they're all consistent with what the standard language says. It does not cover governmental entities unless otherwise expressly provided. So where it was expressly provided, and there's a note that explains that. And there are other examples, but you know, I don't recall there's anything that would be of very much interest. So I could quickly, I folded some, but I think most of them are variations on person.
All right. So we'll go on to the agencies and then we'll see if, does anybody have any questions on this before we move on to the agencies?
Yeah.
Now, okay, all right. So let's move on to the agencies. I'm going to ask you to report on both of these corrective bills at once. So I'll just go in order that I see it here. Do we have somebody from ERS on the hearing?
Yes, this is David Rand that directs the Treasury Committee. There's no change to our Article 22, but we favor the bill for the change.
Okay, and you're good on both bills?
You're good on both of them.
For both bills, we are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. How about Environmental Control Board?
We have no objection to either bill.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Finance.
Hi, Bob Sennemy, Representative Department of Finance. We reviewed both of these bills, and these are, again, all corrective items, so we don't anticipate any financial impact for these, and we're in support.
Okay. Ethics?
They were a letter, I know.
Everybody submitted a report, but we're just one by one. So is there anybody from Ethics here? Do we have anybody who wants to speak on behalf of Ethics?
Mr. Chair, Nina Semler, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The Board of Ethics would stand by its report and does not oppose the passage of legislation.
Okay, thank you. What about the Mayor's Office of Women and Minority Businesses? Nina, is it the same thing on that one?
Yes, it's standby report. I thought we had a representative from the MBO office on, so that's why I hadn't spoken up. But yes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not with the Mayor's Office. I am here for MBO, the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, Chief London.
Okay. So do you have anything to say on your report?
I'm clarifying. If we're seeking the Mayor's Office of Women's and Minority Business Development, that's not my office. I just wanted to clarify. I am here, but I'm here for MBO.
Yeah, so that's what we're asking about, is about your agency.
Oh, if you're asking for the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, we have no objection to either bill.
Okay, thank you. Law Department?
Good afternoon, Mr. Turkeloff from the Law Department. We have looked very carefully over Avery's bills and will approve them for form and legal sufficiency. I have to say, we looked at Councilman Dorsey's amendments. We have no problem there. We didn't see the other set of amendments that Mr. Eisenstark was talking about. So it would be wonderful if we could see that.
Richard, if you can forward that over. Richard, if you can forward that over to Vic during as soon as possible, that would be helpful. Um, and if you see any issue with it, if you can just let us know before we vote. Next up, BPD.
Mr. Chair, I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD, and we stand by our reports. We have no objection to either bill.
Okay, uh, DLR?
Oh, that I the question is who you're asking. DLR as Department of Legislative Reference, it was a mistaken translation. It's uh, we have we've got a letter that they meant on a list that they made of who hadn't reported. Uh, wait a second. That the initials DLR was intended to cover probably Department of Labor. But that's what we got. We we were we were told by the uh, I think it was the mayor's office that DLR Legislative Reference should file a report. And we were referred to file a report in favor of the uh bills. Unfortunately, they came back and said, well, wait a second. We still need a recovery of what you're doing here because there are a lot of new members.
All right, so you stand you stand.
It just came in uh yesterday, late yesterday, we were told to do that. So we sent a summary that I tried to summarize even less and more in the beginning.
Yes, I see that. Okay, so you stand by in your report?
Yes.
Okay, all right, next up is uh the Fire and Police Employees Retirement System. Anybody on behalf of the Fire and Police Retirement System?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Nina Semler with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I don't see a representative from um the retirement system, but they do stand by the report and have no objection to the passage of the legislation.
Okay, uh, next up, DHCD.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. I would not dare argue with Avery over anything related to punctuation, grammar, or sentence structure. We stand by our reports and we do not object to the passage of either of the bills. Thank you.
Sounds good. All right, anybody have any questions for any agency? Seeing none, I will uh turn it over to Councilman Dorsey to explain your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, colleagues, the amendment that DLR drafted at my request, I was I sent to you in your inbox an hour or so ago. Uh, as Avery mentioned, this corrects a change that has effectively been in place for many years. Um, it relates to the street vendor licensing program, its administration and the regulations uh created and upheld pursuant to it. Um, I think that I can cover this pretty succinctly by reading uh a quick email from Chi Chi Niaga Nash that she wrote to me uh about this back in September. Um, when I discovered this discrepancy, she said that reference to DGS is in error and should be updated. There were two main bills. The legislation introduced in twenty fourteen by DGS to consolidate and regulate mobile vending under the Right of Way section, which was at that time I'm adding in DGS. Um, and then two, there was legislation from DOT as part of the transfer, the Right of Way section from DGS to DOT that was finalized in twenty seventeen. So effectively, uh, what this means is that the vendor, the street vending mobile vendor licensing program was uh, which is today still administered by the Right of Way section uh was under DGS at the time that it was created because the Right of Way section was later. Uh, Right of Way section moved to DOT. And and so DOT has been administering the Street Vendor Licensing Program for years. It's just that the code was never updated to reflect that uh that intent. Um, and I I did notice that neither of these two bills uh have been um referred to DGS, so I did just get in touch with them. Uh, and as you know, I just read that email from September as a kind of testament that uh, the Director Niaga Nash um is in full support of this. Um, and uh, but but I know that neither she nor uh their agency rep uh Annie Fullas could be here with us today, but I was in touch with Annie today and DGS is fully aware of this and uh in full support of it. Um, which I believe that the mayor's office can also confirm.
Yeah, if I if I can insert a light a light part of it, the the one that created a recent apparently based on the paper uh Boo Haha was not your normal mobile uh vendor. It was a movable uh barber giving haircuts and whatever on the road. I found that kind of odd.
But to that point, it was quite odd.
Who who does what for, you know?
Right.
Who licensed what?
It wa- it was certainly quite an odd circumstance um uh that led me to kind of unearth this code and um uh, this was an obvious and uh non substantive change that needed to be made. I will say that there probably is some more substantive change under the street vendor program that uh, I'd be interested in addressing at some later date, but this is certainly the non substantive part uh that can be changed and needs to be changed now. Uh, so uh, Mr. Chair, I appreciate you um being willing to introduce this amendment on my behalf. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm happy to introduce it. Um, I'll make a motion uh to move forward with with that amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Conway. Um, all in favor?
All right.
And anybody opposed? No? Okay, and uh
The other the other amendment also needs to be
All right, we're we're getting
By a member of
We're we're getting there. So your amendment, your amendment is is only on is on oh, one, oh, one? Or is it also on the other one as well?
No, the the both of both of the amendments for you are on one oh one.
Okay. Uh, so do we have a, okay, so we're we'll we'll make a motion on it and we'll vote on it. If it comes back with any issues before this hearing is over, we're gonna open it back up. Uh, Vic, I see pop up. Is there is there any issue?
Chair, now we're the Law Department's gonna be fine with the amendment.
Okay. Okay, so do I have um, do I have any motion to move um Avery's amendments?
So moved.
Um, Moved by Councilman Conway, seconded by Council Vice President Middleton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Nobody opposed? Okay, all the amendments move forward. Uh, do I have a motion to move forward on twenty one dash zero one zero one?
I'm in.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ramos, seconded, I think, by Conway. Uh, Richard, can we do a roll call on the bill?
Yes, sir. Are we ready? Roll call favorable with amendments on oh, one, oh, one?
Yes.
Sheriff Schleifer?
Yes.
Sheriff Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there's seven votes in the affirmative, no negatives. We can go to the second reader at the next meeting.
I think you do. I have a motion uh to move twenty one dash zero one two four favorable.
So Favorable.
Second.
Okay, moved by Council Vice President Milton, seconded by Councilman Conway. Uh, we'll do a roll call.
Oh, one, two, four favorable, no amendments. Sheriff Schleifer?
Yes.
Sheriff Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven affirmative, no negatives, second reader at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Avery, for bringing this to our attention and congratulations on passing both of them.
Yeah, and I apologize that it went longer than a hundred and eight uh total. But think about what hours I'm gonna spend having to uh when and if the bills pass. Put them back, move them into the code.
I hear you. Well, this was your idea, so you know, I don't we don't feel bad for you.
No, no, the one it one of the one of the people that's in this your meeting is the one who initiated, I believe.
Okay.
It's the one who initiated the change.
Right, we'll send them up to help you uh to help you do all the paperwork.
I I I thank you. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Anybody who is here for these two bills uh is welcome to log off now, and we will be moving on to the executive appointments hearings. Um, we have Yes.
Now, all all twelve nominees have logged in, but when you get to oh, oh, eight four, Ms. Jones for the the Housing Trust Fund, she's on a device that doesn't allow uh elevation. So when you get there, I'm gonna have to unmute her and uh she can speak electronically.
Okay. All right, we will uh be moving on to EA twenty one dash zero zero seven five. Daniel M. Billing, member of the Auctioneer Advisory Board. I'm gonna ask all nominees to uh introduce yourself and give a quick thirty second summary of why you want to serve on uh whichever commission you've been nominated to. Uh, and then we will entertain questions uh from members of the committee before we move on to the following other uh members. Once uh we move on to the next one, you are welcome to log off. You do not need to wait until the end of the hearing. Um, so do we have Daniel Billing on?
It's Billig, yes.
Billy, okay, take it away.
All right, I'm an auctioneer. I've been licensed in the city of Baltimore for many years. Uh, I've been working in the auction business for over forty years. We conduct hundreds of auctions in Baltimore City. We're concerned um that the the regulations applied to Baltimore City are being um applied evenly to everyone. Uh, I think there hasn't been a lot of accountability uh in the last several years. And uh, I was asked uh to participate in resurrecting the Auction Advisory Board, which hasn't had a member on it for uh some time, so uh Paul Cooper and I volunteered to do this. Uh, we're both very familiar uh with the auction industry in general and Baltimore City in particular.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, anybody have any questions? Seeing none, uh, we will move on to the next nominee. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Uh, we have EA twenty one dash zero zero seven six, Jamar Brown, member of the Retirement Savings Plan Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and good afternoon, members of the City Council. My name is Jamar Brown. I'm a partner with the law firm of Rosenberg, Martin Greenberg here in Baltimore. Um, and uh was uh referred to Mayor Scott uh by David Randall, the Executive Director of the Employment Retirement Saving System um to serve as a board of trust, a member of the Board of Trustees. Uh, it would be my honor to serve on that board as a former employee of the city of Baltimore. Um, I certainly recognize the importance of having um uh dedicated members of the board who are interested in investing the assets and contributions of our employees in a prudent and uh effective way that allows us to maximize the returns and and um and and benefits of that system to employees. So uh, I look forward to the opportunity to serve and um learn learn more about the system and our strategies um as a city for investing those funds.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any questions? Seeing none, uh, we will move on to the next nominee. Thank you. Uh, EA twenty one dash zero zero seven seven, Paul Cooper, member of the Auctioneer Advisory Board.
Yeah, hello, I apologize that I have to alter the settings in my uh on my iPad to get my uh to see me, but uh I'm not able to do so, but I am here uh and I'm certainly proud to serve alongside of Dan Billick. Uh, he basically took my speech that uh it'll be my honor to serve on this board. Uh, our our respective fathers uh served on this board a number of decades ago and we're basically following in their footsteps, serving on the same Auctioneer Advisory Board. And as I said, we want to make sure that uh things are done properly in Baltimore City and there's the proper oversight that takes place.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we will move on to the next nominee, EA twenty one dash zero zero seven eight, Kevin Daniels, member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
Yes. Good afternoon. The yeah, longtime Baltimorean, um, also the professor of social work Oregon State University for twenty years, um, and the president of the Ministers Conference Empowerment, um, CDC. Um, one of the reasons that I would um want to be nominated to the board is because of uh most of the across the uh city, most of the communities and faith leaders um all have um discussed this whole issue of housing and how we could be better positioned to assist them. Um, and I believe that this will assist in doing that. And I'm a long time, my church as a pastor is in the seventh district.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, any questions? Uh, seeing none, we'll move on to the next nominee. Thank you, EA twenty one dash zero zero uh seven nine, Vernadine Kimball.
Good afternoon. Um, I qualify myself to be in this position. Um, I lived in Baltimore for um forty eight years. And my family, we started off in the Gilmore Homes. And we bounced around. There was a time that I became homeless, so I knew the homeless people when we were working to make this um this bill come to action for as affordable housing. I was one of the ones that got the signatures. And I mean, we walked from the north, the south, and the east and the west. We walked, we talked to people, finding out what they wanted. And what I found out in not getting just getting the signatures, um Baltimore, the people weren't dreaming anymore. They had no dreams of a better uh place here in Baltimore. Well, I'm here to tell you, I am a dreamer and I do know that people here in Baltimore need to be able to live and live comfortably among with their means. They need to be here and we need to offer them affordable housing because they can't do it. They can't spend time. They're working two jobs. They can't spend time with their children. Um, just so much, and then the school system. So I would love to be a part, just to be able to um also represent the senior citizens of Baltimore because they are the forgotten citizens. And um they need a lot of help. They don't know uh that they can call a number and get their steps repaired. So it's really important that we let the senior citizens know that somebody's really fighting for them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm hmm.
Does anybody have any questions? Uh, seeing none, we will move on to the next nominee, EA twenty two dash zero zero eight zero, Robert Senemi, um Parking Authority of Baltimore City.
Hi, good afternoon. Uh, Bob Senemi, Budget Director for the city. And um I am will be replacing And um I am, will be replacing on the board um uh Henry Raymond, who, who will be retiring this year. And you know, with this role with a, a, an agency like the Parking Authority, a quasi-city agency, it's important to make sure that there's, you know, some over, oversight from the city to make sure uh our interests are protected. Obviously, there's a lot of interesting, you know, policy issues with parking enforcement and parking policy. Uh, but also, of course, the, the authority has a significant impact on the city's finances where uh we receive some general fund revenues from those uh from parking revenue. So I'm looking forward to, to getting more involved and, and serving in that, in that role.
Thank you very much and uh hopefully uh we'll whip some votes to pass your nominee. Uh, the next up is EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight one, uh Dr. Ronaldo Emin, Evangelista, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, for a member of Community Relations Commission, District Nine. Uh, you're on mute, Doctor.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, I do apologize, I'm using uh my cellphone, I just finished teaching not too long ago. Uh, I'm Dr. Ronaldo Evangelista. I am a full professor of criminal justice and homeland security at Anarondo Community College. Uh, I am honored uh for the opportunity to serve on the committee. I am a Baltimorean as well. Uh, I went to public in, as well as private institutions. I went uh to St. Francis Academy, uh did my uh graduate work at uh Morgan State University uh where I received my uh doctoral degree. Uh, I loved, I loved the city. Uh, I love working for the city and I hope to get confirmed to serve on the board, to give back to the city that has given me so much.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Uh, seeing none, we'll move on. EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight two, uh Mimi Forbes Beal, uh Fire and Police Employee, Employee Retirement System.
Hello, good afternoon. Um, thank you for allowing me to uh speak with you today. Um, I'm a new resident of Baltimore and I actually moved to original Northwoods. I'd like to say hello to my councilwoman, uh Ramos. I just joined your newsletter as well. Um, I'd like to thank the mayor for nominating me to the Baltimore Fire and Police Pension Fund. I currently work for the State of Maryland Retirement and Pension Fund as a Senior Investment Compliance Analyst. Uh, I have over twenty, twenty-five years of compliance and legal uh work. I am also a licensed attorney in the state of Ohio, not in Maryland. And uh for the past twenty years, I've been working in compliance for investment firms, pension funds, and brokerage firms. So I plan to bring that knowledge to the Board of Trustees and um happy to serve my new community of Baltimore.
Thank you. Any questions? No, seeing none, we will move on. EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight three, uh Dr. Yvette Litchi, a member of the Community Relations Commission.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I'm very privileged to meet with all of you for the first time. I'd like to thank Mayor Scott for nominating me to serve on the Community Relations Commission. Um, I am a pharmacist by training. Um, I live in Baltimore, I work in Baltimore, I love Baltimore. I've been in Maryland for majority um of my life and I am ecstatic to be able to serve um the city of Baltimore and our residents. Um, I find it very privileged to have the opportunity to do what many are not able to do. So I would love to get, be given this opportunity to make an impact. Uh, I'm basically for unity and I would do all that I can to um stand up for those who um can't really stand up for themselves, which is why I'm quite interested in this commission. Um, I took classes at Hopkins, I'm very familiar with East Baltimore as well as working in West Baltimore, so I'm able to have a kind of best of both worlds. Um, and I really have a strong passion um to really do all that I can um to fulfill like a calling of making um continue to letting Baltimore to be the great city that it is. Um, thank you all and God bless you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody have any questions? Now we'll move on to the next one. EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight four, uh Brianna Jones, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bree Jones and I'm the founder of um an organization called Parity. Um, guess I want to thank the mayor for the nomination to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund um Commission. I started Parity um about three years ago with the goal of preventing gentrification and displacement in historically black neighborhoods in Baltimore. Um, particularly those that have been impacted by historic systemic racism and to get ahead of gentrification by equitably redeveloping these spaces and creating affordable homeownership opportunities for legacy residents. So everything that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is, uh was started because um are just topics that I'm really passionate about and I spend pretty much every waking hour trying to figure out how we can make it work. And when the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was passed and it was, um, you know, funds were allocated, it was huge because as you all probably know, it's really hard to make affordable homeownership and affordable housing work in Baltimore City um without subsidy support from city and state and federal levels. So I say all that to say, I'm just really honored to have been nominated and to possibly serve on, on this commission. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? No, all right, now, next up, EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight five, Alexander Katzenberg, member of the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Good afternoon, I'm Alex Katzenberg, uh, Mr. Chairman and uh members of the committee. Uh, I've been a lifelong resident of the city of Baltimore. I'm an attorney in the city. I've also been a auxiliary firefighter for Baltimore City since uh about nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-eight. So I've been riding the fire engines in East Baltimore out of Old Town since that time. Um, I'm also a member and former president of Box Four Fourteen Association, which is the canteen service for the fire department uh and still run with them to various fires and incidents uh for the city of Baltimore. Uh, it is an honor um that I've been nominated for the Board of Fire Commissioners. Um, I note that unfortunately, we've had the passing of several firefighters in the last week, which is a tragedy a, as well as Herman Williams, who I knew uh as fire chief and also on the board. So uh it's an honor for me to be nominated for this position. Uh, and uh needless to say, I'm really excited about it and uh hope I can uh help out the city uh through this oversight committee.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Uh, seeing none, we'll move on to the last nominee. EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight six, Leland Shelter, Shelton, member of the BMZA.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. First, I would like to uh thank you all for inviting me on here to speak. Uh, my name's Leland Shelton, I am a lifelong uh resident of Baltimore City. Uh, currently residing in District Six in the Park Heights neighborhood. I am a attorney by trade. Uh, and I am uh honored uh to be able to be considered for the position of the Baltimore Municipal Zoning and Appeals Board. Um. I am acutely aware of the importance of, of zoning, especially for quality, the quality of life issues for our residents in the city. And so uh I look forward to being able to use my, my expertise and my inquisitiveness and my ability to listen and to consider all points of view uh to possibly help uh make our city a better place to live and work.
Thank you. Uh, anybody have any questions for this nominee? Go ahead, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Shelton, thank you so much for your uh interest in serving in the civic capacity. Uh, as I know you're aware, BMZA is a critically important uh function within city government. Um, I was curious if you could tell me a little, or tell the committee a little bit more about what you see your role as, as a commissioner on BMZA and specifically if you could please focus on um how you view um how you would view um the position of communities specifically with respect to geographic proximity. For example, if you were dealing with an issue in, in, let's say, Park Heights, how would you view uh the position of someone in that neighborhood versus say some, the position of someone in a neighborhood, three neighborhoods away or a half mile down the street?
Chris, okay, um. Well, I have to say, I'm litigated by uh my professional litigator. And so uh, uh, the BMZA is a quasi judicial body. And so first and foremost, uh, my allegiance is to the letter of the law. And so where the letter of the law uh uh is unclear or may, or the, or the law uh pretty much defers to my judgment, um, I have to consider all of the community's input, input, uh, uh, input. Of course, proximity matters, that people who are most, who are closest to the issue, whether it be a variance or whatever the issue may be before um the, 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 the board. Uh, they have, they are acutely aware to the problems and to that, or the impact that our decision may have on it. And so of course, I will defer to them, but also uh there is a trickle-down effect of decisions that can be made, uh especially when you consider issues, for example, parking or other issues that, you know, that may cause a problem for other parts of the, of, of a community that may be a mile or two away. Um, of course, as the closer you are uh to the issue, I believe that maybe uh the more weight perhaps your concerns may have. But at the end of the day, you have to consider all points of view, of course, councilmatic deference and things like that also uh may, may factor into how you make your decision.
Thank you, and, and one follow-up question that if I may, Mr. Chair.
Um, sure.
If you had uh two parties, let's say, an applicant uh for an appeal, you had a, a community organization or stakeholder within the community that opposed uh that appeal, um, would you be inclined uh to rule that day um and, and make a decision? Or would you be inclined to um persuade both the applicant and the community to take a step out of the room and try and work things out uh so that you, you had a, a easier job of making a clean decision?
Yeah, uh, once again, I'm, again in my profession, uh, I sort of understand the importance of mediation and how sometimes it's best if the government doesn't have to make a decision for you. If you guys can go and be adults and um, and make a decision and talk amongst yourselves and try to figure out something, that is always the best route. However, uh, if they have had that opportunity uh to, to work out things among themselves and simply they just cannot reach a conclusion among themselves, then I think it is, it is the BMZA's authority, it is, it is why they're there, to make those hard decisions. Uh, and I, and I will hope that uh weighing, of course, all of the facts before me and the law um that I believe that I'll make the decision that I believe is best for the community and for the city.
What, I, I think what I'm hearing you say, just to summarize, is you would be inclined to persuade them to work things out? Um, you know, with conditions that, that would um uh be the uh concerns of the impact of that appeal on the community um and, you know, more view a, a decision in it, a um and contentious uh matter uh as kind of a last resort, try, really trying to push them to work things out. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
They can work things out among themselves best, or else somebody will have to make a decision for you to take the power out of your own hands. So I would, I would, I would strongly urge anybody before to, uh, work things out themselves, but uh, a lot of times it just won't happen and, and I understand that too.
Thank, thank you for your thoughtful responses to those questions. BMZA is, is critically important to me uh and that it's staffed with um or that the commissioners are, are thoughtful individuals. Uh, it's very clear to me from your responses that you are, you certainly have my support. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else have any other questions? Seeing none, uh, Richard, if we can go ahead and do a roll calls?
You want to start, start chronologically at the beginning?
Um, sure, let's start with EA twenty-one dash zero zero seven five, Daniel Billig.
The motion?
So moved, Torrance. Uh, moved by Torrance.
Second.
Seconded by Conway.
Roll call. Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye, thumbs up, aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
There are some votes in the front row, no negative, second read at the next uh meeting.
Okay, EA twenty-one dash zero zero seven six, Jamar Brown. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Conway.
Second.
Seconded by Ramos.
Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye. I'm, Richard, I'm just, I'm just doing a thumbs up because it's impossible to find this mute button, so I'm I'm, I'm an aye for all of them, yeah. They're, they're all fantastic nominees.
Okay, Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance? He may have mute problems too, I'm just saying. Okay, Mr. Torrance, you're on mute now.
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven affirmative, no negatives, second read at the next meeting.
Next up, EA twenty-one dash zero zero seven seven, Paul Cooper. Do I have a motion?
The move.
Second.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Conway.
Affordable. Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello? Mr. Costello?
Aye.
I can see the thumbs up, okay. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Sorry, Richard, aye. This thing is hard to find.
I understand. Mr. To, Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven uh to nothing, second read at the next meeting.
Thank you. Uh, next up, EA twenty-one dash zero zero seven eight, Kevin Daniels. Do I have a motion?
The move.
Moved by, moved by Ramos, seconded by Middleton.
Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello? Give me the thumb.
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance? You're unmuted, sir. Mr. Torrance? He's having trouble with mute. There you go. Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Seven vote, Mr. Chair, sorry. Seven votes in the affirmative, no negative, second read at the next meeting.
Thank you. Next up, EA twenty-one dash zero zero seven nine, Vernadine Kimball. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Conway.
Judge Schleifer?
Yes.
Judge Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance? You're unmuted, Mr. Torrance.
It says I'm off mute, Richard, but.
I put you back on. Okay. You can speak now. Mr. Torrance, do we have your vote?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven to zero, second read at the next meeting.
Richard, I don't, I don't remember voting on that one, but I'm an aye.
Okay, you voted.
Yep.
All right, next up, EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight zero, Robert Sennemi. I will move this nominee favorable. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ramos.
Judge Schleifer?
Yes.
Judge Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance? He's unmuted, sir. Mr. Torrance?
Can you hear me now, Richard?
Oh, yes.
Aye, I'm sorry. It must be my AirPods.
Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven votes in the affirmative, no negative. We go to second read at the next meeting.
You're on mute, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, you're on, you're unmuted now.
Okay, thank you. EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight one, Dr. Ronaldo Evangelista. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Middleton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Burnett.
Judge Schleifer?
Yes.
Judge Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven to zero, second read at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next up, EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight two, Mimi Forbes Beal. Do I have a motion?
The move.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Conway.
I have a little technical, there we go. Judge Schleifer?
Yes.
Judge Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven votes in the affirmative, no negatives. We go to second read at the next meeting.
Thank you. Next up, EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight three, Dr. Yvette Litchi. Do I have a motion?
The move.
Second.
Moved by Middleton, seconded by Ramos.
Judge Schleifer?
Yes.
Judge Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Member Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven votes in the affirmative, no negative. We go to second read at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next up, EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight four, Brienne Jones. Do I have a motion?
The move. Second.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Conway.
Judge Schleifer?
Yes.
Judge Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven votes in the affirmative, no negatives. We go to second read at the next meeting.
Thank you. Next up, EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight five, Alexander Katzenberg. Do I have a motion?
The move.
Second.
Moved by Middleton, seconded by Conway.
Judge Schleifer?
Yes.
Judge Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven affirmative, no negative. We can go to second read at the next meeting.
And next up, EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight six, Leland Shelton. Do I have?
The move.
Moved by Middleton. Seconded by?
Second.
Second.
By Ramos.
Judge Schleifer?
Yes.
Judge Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven votes in the affirmative, no negative. We can go to second read at the next meeting and that concludes the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much, Richard. Thank you, everybody, for participating. We are now adjourned.
Can we close the meeting, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.